Independently making decisions about that. So can we take a look at this? And it is not to blame. We don't do that either. But maybe that could provide some insight. And it gets it out of the way of what we feel. Does that seem like that might be a satisfactory first step for our improvising? They have to do it. We can take that and see what you think.
My phone may automatically stop recording.
I wanted to say this to the governor, the community here, okay? Because they have pushed this thing under the rug as long as they can from the past few hours.
Mr. Cortez.
One more thing, one more thing. When does it warrant or a police department to be internally investigated like Albuquerque was? When does that warrant, among the work that we have had here in this town, you know how? When does it warrant or this police department to be investigated? When did you investigate the investigation?
That is a, it depends. The DOJ, federal arms, and they've investigated a lot of different policing units and departments. The one that comes to mind last big investigation in this jail, the result that led to the removal. And I want to be careful that we don't need anyone who believes that there is an issue or not. Particularly, I think maybe I should deal with this element in Louisiana as well. We are all feeling very angry. I'll speak for myself. I'm feeling very anxious about the officer involved shooting resulting in the death of a Mescalero Apache. There's still more than we can finish. And it is a very tense moment for everyone up here. And certainly, there's no comparison to how loved ones feel. I spoke to the Albuquerque, Berlejo County District Attorney just yesterday again. He does not report to me nor should he. These are independent reviews. The state police do the investigations. That is independent and objective for any DA. State doesn't do that. State police don't say, this worked well, this didn't work well, we want you to do X or Y. They reply that investigation, that report to an independent DA. Tough job for both parties. He's not going to tell me what's going on in his review. He shouldn't. I don't have a sense about what it all includes, but I know that he takes it very seriously. And he was clear, they're doing their thorough and appropriate job. The next question I'm sure someone will ask. I don't tell sheriffs or police officers how to run their organizations. I don't always agree. We don't always agree. And we're not always on the same page about investments or strategies. That's the part of figuring out how we make things right. We're committed. It's a good system. Typically, in this kind of a situation, we still have officers like you. That is not a required thing, but I know it complicates people's feelings. This is a very tough set of circumstances that nobody here, obviously for all of you, take lightly, and I certainly don't. And I'm going to say that there are tensions in every community, including this one, about police actions that aren't correct. I'm not suggesting this is or isn't. I don't know. I'm not doing the investigation. And allegations that are shown not to be accurate, where police are targeted. It's usually of no state, no jurisdiction is completely exempt from these difficult sets of circumstances. Here's my hope. Whatever the DA's review states, that it brings peace, healing, accountability, if that's required. Because this community, the broader community, including Mescalero, deserve that. And I hate that we find ourselves in this situation. So for this gentleman, we'll, I'm going to ask the state police to make a determination about whether they can review. They might ask the AG whether the AG can make a review. Happy to do that. Feel like it's our responsibility to respond to your requests in that regard. They don't make a review about anybody else. And I know they have a really hard job. They do. And so I hope that felt balanced and there was clarity that we will tolerate any abuses and any systemic abuse. Heard me say that if the facts that Mr. Uten is presenting, not that you wouldn't give me the facts, but I will get them. If the hospital did what you said and the way that you said, that's actionable. So we're going to hold people accountable. But I need all the facts. And they have to answer the issue. And that is not something that a governor does by herself or a mayor does by herself. And when it's in your community, it's not something that the police chief or sheriff does. And they're doing their jobs in that context. I say no argument about that. And I thank you for being up here and helping me make sure that this community knows that we respect all points of view and recognize there's real emotion here about a number of things. Was that fair? I didn't, okay, I'm trying very hard because these are really hard issues. Back to the level of facts.
And Mr. Cortez, personally, I'm very sorry for the loss of your grandson. I don't believe you and I have ever been the police chief since July of 2023. And not one time can I recall have I been requested to meet with you. I am happy to meet with you and your family. I will have a member of my staff in a meeting that most simple meeting. I don't refuse to meet with anyone. So I'm happy to do that.
I know wait, might you pay the police department or the court for the wrong rush? I have not to be that. But you know what? Can we take order from Ron and Alvin? And we follow a whole marriage.
So I do feel like that was sort of beaten with a wrong rush, if I have to be perfectly honest about it. I do. And I will tell you, I will tell you that as hard as that is for some people to believe police officers are human, okay, and they don't always get it right. But I think it's incredibly disingenuous to suggest, and I am going to get defensive. I am. But I think, okay, but I have every right to write. So I think it's incredibly, excuse me, I think it's incredibly disingenuous to suggest to suggest that our police department in any way is intentionally corrupt. I think it's disingenuous. Because I can tell you that our officers put themselves on the line every day. I have seen them personally. I've had to call them before I was in an elected position and now. And I have seen them operate with compassion, with sensitivity. I have seen them yet in the United States of America. Social media and in person. I have seen them, because they're bound by the law, not do what someone else thinks that they should do or not act in a way that somebody else believes they should act. And they're not always going to get it right. But I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I did not amend our police department because they work incredibly hard every day, every day to protect and serve our community, and they deserve recognition for that.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Governor Grisham, distinguished guest and fellow citizens. Can you hear me okay? All right. Okay, my name is Chinda Lukowski, and I work for the, I'm a volunteer for the developmental disability in New Mexico. Right now, I'm serving on the MIVIA program. I know you familiar with that, okay? And also, I am serving at the Community Administration for Community Living. It's at state level as a council, okay, in Washington DC. But anyway, this is our volunteer work. I live here in New Mexico and in Alamogordo for the past 38 years, okay? Okay, well, I'm also a family caregiver for my 45-year-old daughter who has intellectual developmental disabilities, autism, cerebral palsy, and she is on MIVIA program. And I just want to say for my personal note that I want to express my sincere appreciation for your support, especially in implementing the program and mandatory training for family caregivers and all the direct staff of prevention of abuse, neglect, and exploitation for people with special needs. Even though I have to go to the bathroom, take care of my own daughters at home, and which I think this is excellent program. Okay, I am honored to speak before you tonight as the president of this community. I am deeply invested in finding solutions to the pressing issues of crime and homelessness that affect all of us. Okay, especially right now, the issue is personal care services, caregiver, workforce crisis, okay? Governor Grisham, by passing the House Bill 94, 94, increasing the reimbursement rates for personal care services under the Community Benefit Program and the annual workforce data correction and cost study during this 2025 legislative session, this will be one of the solutions to tackle crime and homelessness. Personal care services, okay, remember that one? Okay, personal care services are the frontline services that offer essential support in rehabilitation and wellness treatment, such as activity of daily living, medication monitor, bathing, feeding, and grooming. These services can significantly reduce recidivism rates and are likely to be event, offended, and assist with reintegration of people with mental illness and developmental disabilities into society, fostering self-sufficiency and stability to lead productive lives. This approach not only benefits the individual, but also enhances the overall safety and well-being of our communities. Furthermore, New Mexico Legislature must correct workforce data annually. This will give us the analysis, logistic, and to analyze what are the trends and where are people working and how much they're being paid. This information is vital for making well-informed decisions to address the workforce crisis and ensure that every New Mexicans receive the care they deserve. Without this measure, we risk losing dedicated personal care service providers, leaving our most vulnerable citizen without essential care. In conclusion, personal care services are vital to our community's effort to combat crime and homelessness. Investing in these services can support individuals in need, reduce recidivism, and build a stronger, safer, and more compassionate community. Thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to working together to make this community a better place for everyone. Thank you.
I won't be longer than I promised. I see people standing, and I'm grateful. If you don't know what MIVIA is, it is the way in which we take public funds largely Medicaid. We pay family caregivers. And without this specialized program, you can't pay family caregivers. The bulk of caregiving in this state and in this country, depending upon who's doing the analysis, like I believe it's on this association, it's about a trillion dollars in what this country would have to spend if they were paying old family caregivers. Largely a body of women, largely women of color, and we haven't done right by those services. Good news about New Mexico, we do it both in Medicaid. And if you're not eligible for Medicaid, another program called New Mexicare does the same thing without paying family caregivers, no matter what you do about rates. There are not enough providers to meet the need, particularly for older folks who aren't developmentally or have intellectual disability, who we don't have enough caregivers in long-term care facilities, or for aging populations at home. I would ask a favor from you, and thank you for your national leadership, local leadership. Thank you for fighting for families. Thank you for working to clear waiver. We're the only state in America to do that. We're having some struggles right now maintaining that. Your point is, you need more workforce to be able to do it right. But I would ask if we can get your phone number. We moved services from Department of Health to the new healthcare authority. We're trying to figure out rates to give a bit of perspective to this community. Will we do a rate increase, which we should do? It's like 300 million dollars. And that's before you get to long-term care. That's another 300 or 400 million. And that's not an excuse, but it competes and sometimes it just gets lost in the translation. I'm very interested in making sure that sexual caregiving, BRIK, childcare, MIVIA, Medicaid, Medicare, that we're doing right by our families. I'd like to just spend a little more time with you. And I want to thank you for knowing about those programs and working so hard to make sure that New Mexico builds more of them. Thank you.
Good evening, Governor. Thank you for coming down with this light snow that we received. I'm David Lukowski, Chinda's other better half. And of course, I've been working with her and the state of New Mexico, developing the disability program from the ground roots. So thank you, Chinda, for what you've done for the state of New Mexico. What I'd like to bring head to head is, for about three years, I, quite a while ago, I worked with the Otero County Economic Development Commission. And one of the things that I see as a cornerstone to reduce crime is the economic development of what the state can do to help Otero County and Alamogordo bring employers in here that can employ folks of, you know, 500,000, 1,000 people. Because I sincerely believe that economic development is the cornerstone to reduce crime. If you got people working, then they have, you know, it's revolving, what else?
I can tell you that you're right, because all the evidence suggests.
It all starts there.
Always done employment in 20 years. I have an idea. How many of you are aware of your brackish water treatment plant nearby? It's too small. We can do more. It's a huge job creator. So for all my policymakers out there, I'm going to do a shameless, shameless, inappropriate plug. Let's pass the strategic water supply. Let's do more brackish water. Let's clean up and do desalination. Let's have more jobs. You want 1,000 jobs in this community, particularly with the base who's got a ton of expertise, plus all the amazing people that live and work here? That's a job creator all by itself, and I'm 1,000% in. I asked for 500 million dollars without economic development, focusing on how we work on that. I might try to get that history. I'm going to get back to 250 million to put it in perspective. We literally have billions, and I'm going to do another shameless thing as the other. It's the best economy, I think I've seen that in 20 years, lowest unemployment rate, we're in the top five, seven nationally. We're doing a lot of the right work. Is it enough? Of course it's not. As long as we have poverty, it's not enough. So I want that. And any, if that's not what this community thinks is the priority for economic development, you don't need a bossy, short governor telling you what kind of economic government to do. You really invest in whatever you think makes the difference. But I want that too. So thank you. And I'll make sure my economic department secretary, a former chamber commerce guy, a robot that's out here and talks to your local economic development people, just count me in. And I promise that, yeah, and the mayor's already bossing me, so, which is her job. So thank you for that. And I just gave that as an example. So anything you think works here, something I'm interested in, maybe should we get funded? Thank you.
Joy Flack. I'd first like to give a compliment to the Mescalero tribe and how they keep their forest. I believe that has had a huge impact on controlling wildland fires. And having investigated many wildland firefight fatalities, I appreciate it. Second, I am saddened and surprised, Governor, about the lack of laws here in New Mexico. My father, grandparents are buried here in Columbus, New Mexico. I fortunately got to come back to this state to retire. I had a drug-addicted daughter in the state of Washington. And it was only her doing jail time that turned her life around. There is not one answer for these drug and alcohol addicted problems. So we have to have a multi-pronged approach. And law and jail is one approach that we must have in addition to the other programs. Because when she got out of jail, she went into a program. Thank you.
I'm really extremely surprised to be in this community. I'm shocked by that too. And in states like Washington and Oregon, a law that the leaders in assisted combination treatment, which is required medication for a very small, less segment of the population can't say yes. It took me 16 years to pass that legislation. 16 years. And when it got passed, there was no teeth, none. You could just say no. You still don't. You're still not accountable. You can still commit crimes and we need that. Families lose their loved ones to this addiction. It's completely unfair. We don't talk about the trauma, the damage to the balance, like most Americans and far too many New Mexicans. I have my own family members who have long struggled with addiction, were unhoused, some who got well, some who didn't. The one that I'm really comfortable talking about is my nephew, who was 16, was on his way to jail, was also a part of the gang. It was making it very hard for him to make the choices and make my entire family look sick. He's completely sober and well. When they get California, my brother had a mortgage house case. Because there are no programs, and we don't do lethal commitment. Now, at 16-year-old, my brother had control, and not when he turned 18, but it was the state that have these guardrails that saved my nephew's life. It's not the route for everyone, thank you. It cannot be the only solution. You don't incarcerate your way out of these issues. We do more prevention and treatment. But there is a segment of the population that will not, cannot get well. The parents have zero tools, zero, in the state of New Mexico, not one. And that doesn't seem to be a balanced approach to this problem. And the only path for too many of those families is complete estrangement and the likelihood that they lose that family member to addiction and violence. And that doesn't seem right to me either. Or does it seem very compassionate? So I really, I'm going to, can I quote you? Because I don't get it right. I cause confusion, maybe because I'm so verbose, I'm so sorry. They keep giving me coffee, so I'm all wacko. But it's complicated, and you need all of these tools. And the effort by New Mexico should be to use the right tools in the right way at the right time. And the absence of those tools is risk unto itself. And I am going to use that statement because it so much more clearly demonstrates what it is we're trying to accomplish.
A multi-pronged approach. And I feel your family pain. We had to not allow our daughter back in the house because of younger children. She lived on the streets of Seattle, was, she was arrested, in care, and then arrested again, and we left her in jail.
Thank you for the courage to tell everyone this story. Thank you.
Welcome, Governor, and thank you for the great job that you do. And congratulations on your latest Latin Latino Leaders Leadership Award. And for the mayor as well, thank you for your work with Love Inc. I'm a pastor, and I do a lot of work with the homeless here in Alamogordo. I teach Bible study at rehab for men who just got out of prison. And I know that with God's help and teaching people to come to the Lord, that they can change their ways and that they can be productive in the society. And so I really believe in helping people, like you said, Mayor. Yes, people have to help themselves as well. And I do believe that we need programs that we can get people into to train them. But we also need jobs. Mr. Lukowski was right on that. And I've worked with different, I'm a pastor, I've worked with LULAC, I've worked with different organizations. As a matter of fact, I'm vice president of the 8105 Otero-Lulac Chapter here in Alamogordo. I'm also with the Latino Leaders Network as a Latino leader. I also was former president of the Full Gospel, the International Businessmen's Full Gospel here in Alamogordo. And so I've done things in the community that I've seen. And I've also been involved with Elijah Hadley killing. And I do believe, I'm an advocate for law enforcement. I have nephews that are in law enforcement. I have people, family in law enforcement. I have great respect for law enforcement officers, and I know it's a difficult job. But we also have to have checks and balances. And we have to make sure that our officers are trained, and they need the money. And thank you for the governor doing the programs that she's been pushing through to get monies to the communities, to help train police officers. Because we've had a couple of killings here, and that's understandable. I also emphasize with you, Mr. Cortez, and I also have been speaking to other leaders here in the Latino community in Chihuahua. And there have been a lot of problems with killings, murders that go unsolved. And I know it's not the chief of police's, obviously, he just got on. But there has been a lot of problems in the Latino community. And I've heard from some of the leaders in the Latino community, and I'm talking about people who have been here for 80 years. So it's not, you know, just anybody. And they're also involved in the community as well. We just had a big round of applause for Gabe Vasquez, who weren't here very handily and with the help of all the community that believed in what he was doing. And so we do have people here who care about the community, who care about what's going on. And if there's problems as far as like the Elijah Hadley killing, because it wasn't killing, the poor boy was shot 21 times. And I know that on the cam, it shows everything. So I don't understand what the problem is right now, and I hope that it doesn't get thrown under the rug like Mr. Cortez said, happens a lot here in this community. As a civil rights advocate, I am very much into making sure that the civil rights of our citizens are protected. And just as all the LULAC people that work hard to protect the civil rights of any citizen, whether white, black, red, brown, yellow, we're all American citizens, and we all have civil rights. But we also have a homeless problem as well. And so when we address that and do as well. And so, when we address that, and the way we address it, and I agree with the mayor, we need to have programs to help these homeless people, allow them to be able to be trained for a job, or to continue. I just, out of my own pocket, I have this lady who is out there, and she called me. She said, I don't have any place to go, and the temperatures are down. So, I have a friend, and she gives me a good rate. Rizal's, by the way, I'm gonna put a plug in her honor. And it's Rizal restaurant. They have a hotel there. So, she gives me a good rate. So, I bring this homeless lady and others, and she gives me a good rate, and I allow her to at least stay there for a week or whatever they need. It's money that I have that comes from my own. I'm a mentalistic pastor. I help other pastors here. And as a matter of fact, that's Pastor Don Hoffman who's here. And he runs that rehab where I teach the Bible studies for all the men. There's places like that that help Alamo Gordo, that help keep men that, instead of getting into trouble being out there, that learn the Word of God and become productive citizens. I've seen men like that. I was in the store at Lowe's, and a gentleman came running to me, and I thought, oh, I'm in trouble. And he said, no, Pastor Jerry, I want you to, I want you to see my wife and my children, and I have a job, and I'm thankful for having gone to that rehab where you taught Bible study, and it changed my life. And see, that's what we need. We need to help people. But yet, at the same time, we need programs to teach them. Now, that gentleman was in prison for a while, but he came out, he learned the Word. I helped him get a job, and he was able to continue. We need more jobs in this community. I ran into a city leader, and he tells me, well, this is a retirement center, a retirement city. And, you know, that's about it. Well, no, we got the base here. We have a lot. We have the end of the mountain of gods. And thank you, too, for being here, Mrs. President, from the reservation. I appreciate your help, and I know that you do a good job for the reservation up there. And I know that the Elijah Hadley project is deep in your heart, just as it is in mine. And we've discussed that, as well as with the governor. And thank you for going up there, Governor, and talking to the president of the Mescalero tribe. So, I'm involved in a lot of things in the community. And I see a lot of things that we can work together and not criticize and put down one another, but allow us to have this talk so we can communicate, so we can find out what the issues are, and we can resolve them. And it can be done. All we have to do is just work with people, trust in God, and allow us to have that kindness. And thank you for Love Inc., because I know you do good work with that. And I have friends that tell me about how you've helped them out over there. And so, I appreciate that, Mayor. So, thank you, Governor, for allowing us. I know I've sent you a text, and you've texted me back. And you've also been involved in a lot of things around the state as well. And I have a lot of friends, Patricia Wilbon is a good friend of mine, and she's gonna help me with the Elijah Hadler case, because she's the head of the Indian Affairs Committee. And so, we're trying to see where the transparency is. And I know that it's under investigation. It was June of last year, and we're already January twenty twenty-five. And I know Mr. Bregman is in charge of the investigation now. But there's been some problems, and they've been slow at giving us any kind of, or the family, anyway, any kind of information as to what really is going on. They said they had the loss of evidence. So, it's been slow, the investigation. I would like to just have more transparency with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department, with the deaths that are going on and the investigations. And thank you. You're right, the DOJ needs to come in, just like they did into Albuquerque. And see, so there are solutions. We just gotta all just talk, get things done with love and with firmness, and let us just get along with each other, love one another. We're a great state. And let us help those who are being affected. And I'm so sorry for your loss. I know the Contreras family. They're a good family. And so, I just wanna let, I just wanna let you know, Governor, that I appreciate your involvement in coming to these town hall meetings, and for the mayor as well, and for all of the people that are up there doing a fine job. And thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm always scared. I'm not allowed to speak. Is it my turn? Okay, thank you. All right. So, yeah, excuse me. I get skipped over a lot, and I get ignored, and a lot of my concerns do not get addressed. So, I get passed over. So, I'm glad that was not the case this time. Thank you. And for anyone else that allowed for that to happen, where I'm able to speak. My name is Alice Elizabeth Cuevas, and I just jotted down a lot of different notes with the discussions and comments that have been made. So, I'm not really sure how this is going to come out, because I wasn't quite expecting to speak on these different areas that I will be.
Oh, she's not like a Karen.
I come to meetings to get informed, and then also to address anything if needed. But as mentioned, a lot of times, I get passed over, and I'm not allowed to speak. So, the first thing I'd like to say, came to mind to say was, you know, I know that there are good police officers, but I also know that there are those which do things that are not correct. Okay? So, I think I'll address that one first. So, currently, there's an investigation on a situation that happened to me. I was recently poisoned. Without going into any details or anything like that, but a concern also, what I'm gonna be mentioning is going to apply into the different areas or topics of discussion today, was just speaking very generally, not going into specifics. So, I went to the emergency room because I was completely numb on all my limbs. Okay? I was not able to walk within, like, twenty-four hours. So, when I went to the emergency room, a Dr. Wellser wanted to give me fentanyl. Did not ever ask me my level of pain, what my threshold of pain was, did not ask any questions, was immediately wanting to give me fentanyl. That is a concern. So, if I didn't get killed by being poisoned, I would have been probably killed by fentanyl in the emergency room. So, that's a concern. So, then that goes also into these different investigations and things that occur that I hear here with different people and their situations which have occurred with loved ones, family members. I had a situation back in two thousand and six. Okay? There was a cop, Prudencio, and there was also McCully. He was a rookie cop at the time from Chicago, Illinois. Again, without going into details, this comes between, not to say anything more. But what I will say is, there was a federal investigation by the FBI with the entire Alamo Gordo Police Department because of what was done to me, what happened, which should not have ever happened, is what I was told. So, I'm looking at my notes. So, I was injured severely. I could have been paralyzed from the neck down, okay, with the injuries. Yes, I do believe, I'm gonna speak on this next sentence. I believe in Jesus Christ. I believe in the power of Christ. I believe in protection of the Holy Spirit and all those wonderful things. That's so good to hear of many people speaking about faith, because I have a deep faith. And I do know that that is a lot of times why I am able to walk and talk, as several doctors have said, is a miracle, because I probably should not be walking and talking, and that is from those injuries and some other things I've been experiencing over the rest of my life. And even from the recent time I was poisoned, that I'm still able to walk and talk. So, to go back, I heard the name McCully, which I made mention of, and also Raymond Brown. So, I'm not sure if that's the same Raymond Brown cop that was involved with the situation with me some years ago, when I was working with, I want to recall if that was the one, if it was with Chins. I ended up going to court because of a whole ordeal there with that place that I was working at. And there was someone that was working at the time as, I'm trying to remember which name it was, Stephanie Hartman. But then it was found out with an investigation, there was the name of Rose Haley, or either she was Rose Haley, and her true name was Stephanie Hartman. So, if this is the same cop that was involved in my situation, they were trying to put me in jail. Thank goodness, there was video footage of being coached, the cop Brown. And I know that there were two police officers, one of them, I don't recall if this is Raymond Brown that was involved in my situation, or it was another Brown, but there were two Browns. So, Alice said they were trying to put me in jail. Thank goodness, there was video footage. And this person that was going by Rose Haley, which is Stephanie Hartman, her true name was to respond to the investigation, that cop was trying to coach her on what to say to get me placed in jail. These are very serious concerns. I'm one individual that has gone through a lot so far. I have been told by attorneys, which have fought my case, I've also represented myself, I won my cases. Several people I want to meet become an attorney because of different ways of how I am. I'm not gonna waste time. So, I choose not to though. But I have won my cases, and as well as having very good representation. So, these are concerns that, you know, I as an individual have gone through, what I've gone through. I have a good case, I've been told, on more than one occasion by good attorneys, against the Police Department, several other entities, of harassment and other, okay, things because of what's been happening to me, has happened to me over the years. So, I am one individual, Alice E. Cuevas, Alice Elizabeth Cuevas. I know what's happened to me. Many people know what's happened to me. There are many which believe me. Many people that know the truth of what's happening, what's going on. And it does concern me when I hear how this is happening to many other individuals. I know how it is to go through the system. I know how many times I have to report to the police station to get my report. To have it, what do they put in addendum, to have it corrected, because the stories are changed. Whatever it is I report to the officers, the stories get turned around. A lot of the police reports are falsely done. I mean, I could just speak on so many things to that. But, like I said, I just wrote down some notes. Something that came to mind to make mention, another, I know that there was another situation years ago. My guys Automotive, Automotive, I was also doing advertising and marketing for local businesses. And I do that, actually, it's been not like I used to before. So, I know that their daughter got killed. And I know that the last time I spoke with the owner, one of them, it was mentioned to me that they still hadn't found out who the person had killed their daughter. There's a lot of love in it, too. Those are serious concerns. So, it just seems like a lot of times, you know, I hear whether from people that I know myself, or from what I talk about, their concerns of what's happened to their family members by police. There's another individual I was actually gonna be a witness to, because, again, Prudencio involved, was incriminating this person with stealing. The charges were dropped. So, you know, I hear of a lot of these different situations. A lot of times, they're not addressed correctly. They are just swept under the rug. We're being sent around in circles. If a person does not have the time, a lot of times, or the resources to follow through, nothing is ever done. The truth is not brought forth to the light. And there needs to be some channels or certain individuals to where a person is able to report things when there are concerns. And that there is not just one individual, but there are certain, maybe, entities or certain individuals that are able to, I don't know what it could be, monitor or address these serious issues, you know, take it into account a little bit more seriously when several people are coming forth and speaking about their concerns where there are serious concerns. I'm bored. I don't know, something comes to mind that can be done. So, I think, I think now I'll just speak on it. So, you know, I know the importance of mental health, good mental health. I know the importance of a good emotional health. I know the importance of physical health, spiritual health. So, I actually give breathing and relaxation, light stretching classes. My classes are, so this is maybe on a lighter note, and what could also help many people with a lot of these serious concerns that society is confronted with. And that is a large part of what I do, why I do this. What I do is because I am standing here strong. I am standing here able-bodied. I am not committed to an insane asylum, which has been trying to be done to me also in the past. So, I just know that it's important to take care of ourselves in every area as possible, as I mentioned, mental, emotional, physical, spiritual health, holistic, holistic well-being. So, I give these classes. So, something that was divinely inspired to me to give in twenty twenty, when we were going through the whole ordeal with mask-wearing and all of that, being enclosed. So, I started giving classes in twenty twenty-two. I am certified. I have been giving classes in several areas here in Alamo Gordo, also in Los Cruces, and in Redo. So, that is open to the public. If you'd like information, you can speak to me. You can go to the Alamo Gordo Recreation Center. That's one of the places I was giving classes. You can also go to, oh, gosh, this is just Alamo Job, Alamo Job on New York Avenue. So, those are two of the locals I'll mention now. And they can also probably give you information about me, to reach out to me. But I do know that it is important to take care of those different areas of our well-being, our mental, emotional, physical, spiritual health. And that a lot of times also prevents from people committing crimes. If a person is not healthy, not well, if a person is depressed, sad, that is why they tend to want to be involved with bad individuals, we consider, or individuals that do bad things, be involved in crime, and those kinds of situations. You have to have good mental, emotional health in order to want to be able to do well and drive a society, right? You want to contribute to society in a positive manner. So, that's one of the reasons why I give my classes. There's so much more involved with that. So, if anybody has interest in these classes, I already mentioned a couple of places. I'm sure they can give you information. I'm not sure how long it may stay here, and how long there's going to be other questions or comments made. But if you want to, reach out to me before I leave. That's great. That's fine. I think that's it for now.
Welcome, Governor. My name is Catherine Chabaye. I met you about a year and a half ago at Jeff Swanson's. We took a picture together. You were in the red cowboy boots, and I was in the leopard poncho. Anyway, Governor, I'm here tonight for several reasons. And I'm in agreement with Ross over here. In twenty sixteen, my son was executed with a bullet to the back of his head, and where it exited out the top of the right, left ear. I saw my own son's body, which police, law enforcement, the sheriff's office hid from me for five days, because they believed another family was the parents. When Detective LaSalle came to my house, he told me that my son had been shot, and that they believed he had committed suicide. Now, you cannot take a Ruger and put it to the back of your head if you intend to commit suicide and not lose that gun from recoil. I grew up with law enforcement family, with preachers in my family. I attended Mount Mercy University, where I earned my bachelor's in psychology, criminal justice, and of course, botany and biology, because I had taken a lot of nursing courses. I've had several jobs. I have a fellow colleague, colleague of mine still, when I worked at the halfway house in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I was the first woman to walk through the gates of Fort Madison after a person had been murdered down there, like, fifty years. And I was the first woman to come across. And believe me, all the officers were out on the catwalk with the rifles. I have seen a lot. I know a lot. I do not care for negativity in law enforcement, which is also why I got out of it. I know there is corruption. I know there are good officers. I have two nephews right now, who are police officers in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, both of which were distinguished. My one nephew was actually the guard of the unknown soldier. My brother fought in the Persian Gulf War, the first one. And my deceased husband was Navy, and the one prior to that was Army. So, I have a lot of background that way, as well as religious. I was raised in a Lutheran school, Prokial School, to eighth grade. Like I said, attended Mount Mercy University. That's a Catholic college. I know what good law enforcement looks like. And I know- And I know there are good officers here that may be buckled. But just recently, I was assaulted in a Dollar General store wearing this shawl, this outfit, all right? With a purse over my arms. A black woman entered the store because, yes, she became my neighbor about a week ago. I do not know her name. She punched me three fuck times in the face and they let her walk. Now, the, the procedure, or I should say the technique she used was one of which she grabbed my arm, pulled me towards her, punched me, then pushed me away as though I am the aggressor. I did not aggress. I did not hit this woman. Yet they wrote me up for public disturbance or disorderly conduct. I did not touch that woman. She came in, I did not see her coming. I have a chipped tooth to prove it. All I know is this. They took the video on a, on a thumb drive and I have never seen an officer announce out loud, "Dang, ma'am, I've got all, all of the video on this thumb drive." Who does that? And then he walks over to me and tells me that I am banned from the store after the, the manager protected me. She is the one that freed me from the woman because I froze. When she hit me three times, I counted the three times, but I could not move. And she got her out of the store, told her that her and her children were not allowed to come back to the Dollar General. And then she shut the door and told me to stay inside protecting me. When the officers arrived, the first ones, she was upset because they went to go talk to the woman that was standing out there. And she opened the door and said, "Oh, no, you come in here first. You need to see the video of how this woman just assaulted this woman." And somehow, in between, our officer that was first on the scene, who didn't take my statement, that I had to ask for him to take pictures because she punched me in the eye, the nose, and of course the mouth, which is why I have a chipped tooth now. So do not tell me about your law enforcement here being fair because something is not right. And I don't know if it's money, but I also had something else happen a year and a half ago in which I was assaulted. Let me tell you something. I want no power. I want no position. But I was offered to be the chair ward and I didn't want it because I don't really know anything about government. I only tried to help my children. I had a son who was autistic and later on probably would have been schizophrenic as well. But that didn't make it right for him to be murdered and for it to be covered up in mark of a suicide or for Officer LaSalle to try and bribe me with the money from the people who wanted me to take their money to pay for my son's funeral. I would not take it because that is my son. So all the years I've been here, 24 years, I never had any problems until this last year and a half. And I was assaulted and I was revictimized. It was even revictimized in the courtroom. Here's another thing you need to know. They don't provide representation. I begged for it three times from the judge here. I called over a hundred lawyers who would not come here to try a case. They denied me for one reason or another. Not all of them was because the minute they heard it was Alamo Gordo, they would not come. And Ms. Payne there herself came into my courtroom and watched my trial. What did you think of that, Ms. Payne, when you watched my?
Me.
Uh huh. You sat right in the front row, you and two of your secretaries. The trial didn't go good for me because I had to represent myself. And at some point I do get upset. Well, let's put it this way. By two o'clock, I was tired. I was wore down. And if I could have had another day or if I could have had representation, then I would have won that case because this area has become now the black market for video and audio foredeals. And they did that with the audio tape and the videotapes that were done in regard to that case. None of that is real, none of it. And I had two witnesses and one of them was here. And she even testified that the man touched me, that the man forced me backward. Then he intimidated me, yet the judge overlooked that statement. So I am a Yankee and I know the difference between justice and corruption. And even though you went through, I don't know how many sheriffs, because Benny Hill was not much better. And now I know there's a different police chief and I, God hope you, God bless you and I hope you do the right thing. Because all I said was, when evil is like this, good men and good women will come. Governor, you're the only woman I see. Because no man that came down here or tried to help me or didn't help me didn't ask me any questions. Now, I don't know what that's based on, other than the fact that, yes, I am very vocal. Thank you.
I don't know if PA or anyone else, I want to be careful in some of the articles. These are valuable testimonies that help people feel what's occurring in the community. I know they're valuable and will lead us to get a sense about how people are feeling or worried about transparency and accountability. We typically don't go pine about what's happened with an arrest or the lack of arrest or court cases. They don't know the facts and that's something governors should or do in general. But I don't want people to feel like if you spend the time particularly waiting to tell us your personal stories and your journeys, that folks here who do have the ability to look at an arrest record or the lack of arrest record. Um, and I don't want to delay, uh, more comments. They're very valuable. Uh, I would ask, and I, I don't think they'll say no, but they're really, really proud of you and supportive to get information today. They don't have to be here. Uh, I ask them to, and they'll say yes. I mean, some of these people have to be here because they work for me and I just make them. Uh, but that's not true for people, uh, from this community. And so I'm grateful that they're here. Would you take a look at that particular arrest record?
Oh, Ms. Payne had to be here. She'll take an opportunity to lick anybody's boot.
You want to do that? And I feel, you know, just saying, I will take a look. And I just, I just don't want people to feel like that they give us these stories and, uh, thank you for your, uh, courage. Personal feelings are hard to share. And, and there's a lot going on here. And so I just want to make sure that we're not being disrespectful to people who are giving us these stories. And maybe they say that you want to do that. I'm just asking them if they want to be willing to independently do that. Make sure that they understand.
Sure, again, ma'am, I'm very sorry that you're a victim of a crime. Team, team here, I'm speaking. Um, so my staff can take down your information. Um, I can't be much about what happened to you or your son in Otero County, but anything associated with the Alamo Gordo Police Department, we can look into and see if it's been resolved or never been corrected. It sounds like maybe your case went to court already, so.
I feel like I've been targeted, sir.
Okay, but you're wonderful. We can reach out to you. We can have some dialogue and see, see where that ends. Does that sound good?
Thank you so much.
And just a quick housekeeping. We have two microphones. We're both working one half of the crowd here and we're going in order of people that we see. So I know folks have been waiting and we're just going through the order as we see people. So, I appreciate if people be impatient.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the panel for coming down here to engage in this conversation. I am Caleb Blanchard. I'm the Health Equity Specialist and Coordinator for the Otero County Community Health Council. I'm joined by my colleague, Denise Williams. She is our Health Council's Community Liaison, but she's also a peer navigator for a local private practice here, the Kimi Jordan Mental Health Rehabilitation Services. So just saying that our Health Council is comprised of diverse professionals and community members who are instrumental in guiding our work. So one of our Health Council's top health priorities is mental health, including but not limited to access to care. So as you know, we are a rural community with a severe shortage of mental health professionals. It is very difficult recruiting and retaining these clinicians. We have one suggestion to address this shortage, which is allowing social workers to enter into an interstate compact, which could help our community with accessing additional clinicians. So our question, our question for you is, are there any statewide initiatives that might assist our community in this regard? Thank you.
Yeah, so for folks who don't know about these compacts, they sort of equalize hiring, liability, cross-training and all, cross-licensing, so that we are doing a better job really recruiting and retaining professionals. And bigger states have bigger schools, bigger classes and more population. So I'm a fan of those. I'm going to give you to sort of, I'm going to be the devil's advocate. There are a lot of members of the legislature that I think are really going to have robust debate about these compounds. I get it all the time. My new secretary who's well-versed in this area. We're leaning on the side that I have supported. As for some of you who are aware of my past life as the former secretary and secretary of the region, that these compacts are very useful. The liability reductions are causing many policymakers to whistle. And I have not sort of won that over. I give that to you, not to tell you that you have to fix it because you can't in a compact. Not to tell you that it's not unlitable, but I wouldn't give you a sense in the community about why we just don't do it. Um, and so I'm working through that. Um, I want to tell you that there's really good news about a lot of professional recruitment and retention and then tell you what we're really struggling with. I think you'll want to know. Um, part of it is getting critical supervision for folks that are, sort of, new in these fields and we are working through that. We're likely to double the size. At medical school, that's not for social work, but it, it's all related to the kinds of practitioners we need at all levels. Um, we have now the highest Medicaid rates in behavioral health by far in the country. We have no co-pays for behavioral health. Outside of Medicaid, we have a reimbursement. We also do direct state funding. We are encouraging communities that have regional behavioral health. Uh, we're doing these community health centers. We're doing increased training, loan forgiveness, upfront, uh, uh, support for folks to get masters and PhD. Well, not that that's required, you know, this whole continuum of professionals. In policy work, I would argue we're leading the country. It is hard to recruit professionals to rural states and rural communities. That's not an excuse. I'm interested if there's something we're not doing in addition to the compact, which I really appreciate that we know about it, that we're advocating and that we're really looking at getting more folks. So again, this is really great and really important. You have a big advocate in the new secretary who's already trying to push out the money because I'll pick on some of the, or some of the Department of Health, they weren't getting it out to you the way that they should. Expect more and expect it faster. And so, and I didn't come to that with my conclusion. You should know she did that, which is great. My other Department of Health folks are really working on it. But we're missing something. There, there is a sense by far too many practitioners that this is not a friendly state to work in. And I'm trying, I think that's a lot of misperception. I'm working on that. There's a lot of fighting between for-profit hospitals, non-for-profit hospitals, health professionals, advocates, trial lawyers, legislators. I'll throw us on the page there to the executive branch. And a lot of it is not accurate. Some of it still needs some tweaking. I will tell you, it's not what you asked me, just for the community to know. Do you think that homelessness and housing risks and the intersection of crime and public safety and addiction are complicated? Wait till you start to unravel the malpractice and getting professionals in your rural states. And we're not alone in this effort. You know, every state is literally working to steal every practitioner. The reason that we don't just do all the services for just veterans, healthcare, is because there are enough practitioners, doctors, peer counselors, social leaders, behavioral specialists in the entire country to meet the need of just veterans. They don't exist. Takes a long time to grow and train them. These sound like excuses, but they're not. We have got to do more. So you've probably seen us, we've got billboards, we're telling doctors and practitioners, "We'll move you here," "We'll do loan forgiveness," "We'll send you back to school." We're doing healthcare, high schools and training. We're doing all kinds of things. It would be very helpful to make it all of this good policy. It's not resulting in enough access. For the Health Council to maybe help us think through it. Are there some ideas we missed? Is there some implementation that we haven't done as well as begun? And then I didn't tell you what I was promising to tell you. I have no control, again, over private insurance. They can charge or do whatever they want, which is why so many people in our communities can't get firewood insurance. And we are in government, we've never been able to help. So one thing in Mexico has gotten better than any place in America is how we manage workers' company insurance protection. By creating a quasi-state entity, upfront funding it, you can pay any premium. We're not underwater. It's working. It's not to say it's perfect. It's a really good example. We'd like to take that idea and apply it to medical malpractice and related supports so that I'm not held hostage by a private insurance company in New York City that refuses to mature people, support people, and then has a chilling effect for all the other practitioners. Because if you're going to have a multidisciplinary team or regional healthcare center, you need MDs and everybody else. We need addictionologists and everybody else. So I just want you to know, I'm introducing that in this session. I feel really good about this concept. I can't promise I get it over the finish line. I have some good comments about how legislatures feel, some questions. But you should really help us figure it out. Uh, she's right here. I'm here too. But we hear you. We're not satisfied either. But, uh, and I think that the basis can help us with some work and stuff too. So I'm very interested. One last thing, there's a proposal, then another, Austin Public School. Again, these are different levels. You're talking to me about a lot of the core behavioral health counseling, peer counselors, laydax and others. I'm clear that's different than at the, the whole system from social work to here is broken. And then one last thing that's going to sound puny, but it's a reminder. I think we're really harming ourselves. I am very frustrated here. We inherited two really unfair deals as a state. The last administration, I am not going to pick on a governor who's not here, whether it's Johnson or the late Governor Richardson or Martinez. And I hope they give me the same courtesy and respect when they refer to him all. And the next governor. The budgets were different. The challenges in the state were different. And the interpretation from one sentence in the Affordable Care Act caused this state to make decisions that literally canceled behavioral health. That's a fact. It got canceled in the state of New Mexico. That's unreal. Didn't happen anywhere else in the country. And it did us absolutely no favors. If you don't think that had a chilling effect on providers, I had to pay down close to 200 million, set all the liability losses in my first two years and nobody would practice here. Let me repeat that. For two years, nobody would practice here. And we got that resolved. And then we had COVID. I hated COVID. Actually, I still hated COVID. I hate viruses. I hate it all. And that didn't help us recruit, place people. You know, we didn't do anything. It just wasn't happening. That happened to all of us. We don't have to agree about all the strategies about asking you to agree to be one anyway. Just it didn't happen. We're behind everybody else. We've had a 75, I think it's higher than that now, maybe a 78% increase in providers and access to services in the state of Mexico in just one year. But when you're in a hole, it's 10 miles deep. But when you're in a hole that's 10 miles deep, people don't see it or feel it. And I don't want to minimize the struggles you must be dealing with in this community. I want to do more, I really encourage you all to figure out a return, people. System, I want to fund it, I'm all about it. So it will help, all your practitioners will do everything they can. And that was too long-winded, but I hope, except that you're probably tired of hearing me talk, I'm so sorry, I don't get it, they don't let me out. I want to create a baseline, because I don't want people to feel like the state is kind of deaf, or legislators aren't thinking about it, or that it's easy here on the front end. Because I think sometimes it's valuable to know why things don't feel like they ought, like they should. Because I need that edification, to understand why I can't just solve a problem like this, because I'm very impatient. And I really do appreciate your expertise and your work, and I hope that was somehow helpful. And I hope the invitation to this community, I don't want to walk away without committing real resources and real solutions. And I want you to have what you need. You deserve it, your families deserve it, the state deserves it, we want to do more. And I hope that feels like a great set of responses, and that we do respect your expertise and the work you're engaged in every single day. Thanks.
I'm Wendy Okides, and I'm a retired special ed teacher, special ed administrator for 32 years. One of my concerns is, we know that there's a correlation between students under special services and them ending up in the jail system. With that knowledge, however, when we look at people getting guns, we don't look back at students' history in school. If a student is under special services, and they have drugs in school, or they take a weapon to school, or they've assaulted someone in school, they have to go through a manifestation to see if it's a manifestation of their disability or not. That isn't looked at when we, when someone applies for a gun, then, when they turn 18 years of age. And I'm just highly concerned that we don't look at that as a state, as a nation, look back and say, "Okay, when someone applies for a gun, can't we look back at their school records to see if they have some type of assault history in school that has been pushed aside?"
Thank you for being a special education educator, thank you. That's another area we should talk about, is not being able to get enough special education educators, and not getting enough support and respect for the world that they do in our schools every day. New Mexico also has the highest percentage per capita of special education students in the country. And it's a huge lift, it's triple the average. A lot of reasons for that, it doesn't make it any less true, so it creates real challenges for us, I agree. There are a lot of protections about school records, about adolescent records. And, again, I'm not looking for agreement, but I want you to know where we are. I asked for a 14-day leave period before we could get a firearm. The legislature did pass seven days. As is fair, it was immediately challenged in court, but we won. And what I didn't know before I was the governor, before I was dealing with these public safety issues, I had no reason to know. And it is really hard to deal with the information, to go through a background check. And it's not so easy, it's not like it's red, you clearly don't qualify, or green, you clearly do. There's a lot of stuff that's yellow, if you will, and it takes a long time to go through. And when they can't meet the rating period requirement, you always default to green, because that would be unfair to people, right? If you just defaulted to red, just because you don't have the time, I get that constitutional protection. They do need more time. It may be time for us to look at what legal parameters are for higher situations, particularly with the growing... I don't want to pick on any with a disability, that's outrageous, and people with disabilities have other protections as they should. But maybe we should look at that, and I'd like to tell you that I have enough legal expertise. I practiced law for 10 minutes, wasn't in the criminal side, so if I don't have that money, I'll find experts up here that know a lot about that. And I'll take a look, because I can use more education, that there are critical protections for kids for good reasons.
And I understand that, it's just my heart aches for former students that now are in jail for murder that should have never been able to have a gun, in my opinion. And, and others that have been murdered that just shouldn't have been in the situation they were in, which goes back to the mental health and reciprocal.
So without prejudice to folks with disabilities, because we don't do that. And without violating the constitutional protections for every individual 18 to possess a firearm, I will do the necessary research and have my law enforcement experts and legal experts, of which there are many right up here, talk to me about what we ought to do or cannot do. And I'll learn about this, because I mentioned in my opening remarks, and I don't want it candy-coated, and I want this community, every community, this state, has a growing, serious set of problems with juveniles and younger individuals who are not allowed to have handguns and firearms in many circumstances, who have them and who are never allowed to take them to school, are and are committing crimes with those firearms that are incredibly dangerous and serious. And it's escalating here quicker than in any of the states around us. And we got to get our arms ready, because it's untenable. And thank you for identifying that, making it an area to look at, and I have no expertise about that, I'll be back. But it is an area that we're working on, and several DAs and the DA Association, I believe, is likely to enforce a set of juvenile changes and juvenile justice bills. And I want to speak for this DA, he's going to have to make his own decision, but I would be surprised if the association doesn't lean in for the vast majority of those changes. And I just want this community to know, there's a lot of really good experts that are working on this issue. I thank them for engaging and briefing us about what their intentions will be session.
Just, just one more...
About where we are on some of the juvenile justice stuff?
Yes.
And I want to speak more.
Sorry, just one more comment on that, and then I did have something on the unsheltered population also. So my comment on that was perhaps something that we could do in this state, and I didn't teach in this state, we just recently moved to this state after I retired. But just a suggestion is, in those manifestation meetings, perhaps having law enforcement present, explaining again that when you are out of school, you are not sheltered from the legal system as you are in school. And again, I have a stu-, I have, you know, my heart's with the students with special needs, we have a child with special needs, and so I don't want anyone to think that, you know, I have any, anything against special needs, because I didn't want that to come across. But with the...